Oh goodness gracious.
Can you wait seven minutes? Menacing little dog.
Twenty nine, yeah.
Mr. Lively, will he come back whenever he comes over to the house? He sits in the car. No, but I mean, my God, when you look at it, you can't believe what tears you apart.
Why don't you pop in the six thirty?
All right. It's six thirty, August the twenty eighth. Let the Grantville City Council regular session meeting come to order. Please rise for the prayer and pledge.
Father, your heaven, how will be known, that being grown, that will be known on earth as his own. Give us today a greater bread, forgive such trespasses, forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from sin, and deliver us to kingdom of power and glory forever. Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, citizens' comments regarding the agenda. Ms. Cody, you're the only one on the list. You may come up.
My name is Selma Cody. I live at two fourteen West Grantville Road. And I am here to speak against really converting the Passenger Depot to a rental facility. We already have several facilities that can be rented. And this is your decision, and I understand that. But I think I would appreciate it if you would consider what you may be depriving the public of. And it's not just the public that lives in Grantville. It's those that would travel into Grantville. If we were to align with the Georgia tourism, they would bring buses of people to Grantville to visit our community. Think what that would do for the people who own businesses on Main Street. And Alan, I may be misquoting you. I didn't hear all of that you said the other night about not moving what we have to the Passenger Depot. I understood you to say that it was not climate controlled. It is. The facility there is better than what we have here. And what we have here is virtually impossible for anybody to get in there. They would have to have a clerk to unlock this door, go down and unlock the other door, and then stay with them to make sure that we didn't lose anything. And talking about things that we could share, I have something here handwritten by Mrs. Donald Banks. I have here a copy of the deed to the cemetery that was written in eighteen forty-nine, I believe. It's cursed, but I can't read it. Then I have a letter, and this is the second letter that I have received, from a private citizen talking about the life that she lived in the Mill Village and what it was like to live there. This is a brochure, you may have seen it, of the walking tour that the garden club formed. These are things that we can share. This is just a sampling of what can be shared with the public. And you would be surprised how many people aren't interested in historical towns. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Berry, now when you address us, you address us as a citizen, correct?
Yes, this is, I'm in the D Berry. And this, my comments are for the record. And speaking regarding the budget, I'm opposed to adoption of the pathetic proposed budget presented by staff for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four for the following reasons. Number one, it is excessive. It exceeds the cost of living increase and is based on increasing the millage rate, which puts a financial burden on Grantville taxpayers. I'm opposed to this increase. Number two, current resources are not being used efficiently, for instance. Too many city-owned leased vehicles and the high cost to maintain them. We do not need more vehicles. Number three, the budget includes increases for poor performance without performance evaluations. It does not provide payment for our full-time mayor, the person managing the city. Number four, the budget increases spending limits with no requirement for bid processing, and there is poor management of our utility company. Therefore, I feel this proposed budget is not in the best interest of the community. Deladon Berry, citizen, also council member of Grantville.
Ms. Cody, the record. Thank you. All right. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So I would like to make a motion to amend it.
Unless it's an emergency, we're not adding anything to the agenda. We had work session. We had, this is the advertised agenda. So is this an emergency?
My motion is to amend the agenda, to add an executive session for personnel.
Well, we're not going to do that. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
My motion is on the floor.
Do I have a second? Hearing none, fails. All right. Do I have a first and second on the agenda?
I already made a motion.
Second. All in favor of approving the agenda? Raise your right hand and say aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay. Approval of minutes. City Council Special Call Meeting Minutes, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
City Council Regular Meeting Minutes, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I have a question.
It's already voted on. City Council Work Session Meeting Minutes, Agenda August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. City Council Special Call Meeting Minutes, August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Ms. Greshafer, Public Hearing, please.
Yes, sir. We will open the public hearing at six thirty-eight. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on the application of Jessica Testa for a license for on-pound premises, consumption of beer, wine, and distilled spirits at Sanguin Door, Inc., Thirteenth Church Street, Grantville, Georgia. This hearing is to receive public comment for or against this application by Jessica Testa for her license. Is there anybody who would like to speak for the application? Is there anybody who'd like to speak against the City Council granting the application? Seeing none, sir, I suggest we close the public hearing at six thirty-nine.
Public hearing is closed. All right. Decision on Second Reading Ordinance Number twenty twenty-three dash eighteen to adopt City of Grantville noise ordinance. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, is there any discussion?
We've talked about it now for three times.
Is there any discussion?
If you want to ask a question, go ahead and ask a question.
There are four errors in this ordinance, which I brought up at the last meeting.
Those have been corrected.
They are still, and this copy that's in the packet, they're still in there. So I'm just wondering, you know, if we are going to allow noises and disturbances on Fridays.
That was corrected.
The pages of this ordinance are not numbered, so I'm just going to do one on page two. If you come down to mechanical sound making devices between the hours eleven and seven, Sunday through Thursday, and between the hours of midnight and seven a.m., Saturday and Sunday. And my question is, what about Friday?
That's a Friday, Saturday, Wednesday.
Correct. We corrected it. You must not have it.
On page, on page two, human-produced sounds. Fridays left out on that one. On the next page, sound amplifiers, Fridays left out on that one. Party noise, Fridays left out on that one. And if you go all the way to the last page, I think it, yep, next to the last page, there it is again. Commercial entities, Fridays left out on that one. On the copy that's in my packet, maybe I did not get the same information that everybody else got in their packet.
So Mr. Mitchell, would those corrections need making? We cannot approve this tonight, can we?
If those are corrections that, or changes that you want to make, then you cannot. What you can do is just simply postpone the Second Reading to your next meeting. We don't have to go back and start the process over. Well, actually, what you can do is you can adopt it with those corrections being made.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation.
So are we to make those corrections we have to make? We thought we caught them all.
Just simply adopt it, ask correction.
So we will be adding Friday to all four of those sections.
I'm on the ledger already, there are three in all.
Okay. All right. So we in agreement about that, on like a motion to adopt as an amendment?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Decision on Passenger Depot Conversion to a Rental Facility. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Can I discuss?
Go ahead.
Can I make a statement?
Yes, sir.
Selma, just for the record, it didn't have anything, my comments didn't have anything to do with it.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I said, you said when you came up that I had made some comments about.
I thought that you had made.
Well, I didn't.
Because I couldn't hear what you.
I didn't, I'm sorry.
Okay.
My concern has always been vandalism. Because you can't, vandalism, because you can't get back something that's original.
Well, the mayor is.
I was correcting that because it didn't have anything to do with climate control. And you know, just in retrospect, you know, when Mark King was still with us here, he asked a question at one point in time, how many people had been to look at our historical artifacts in the last year? And I don't remember whether it was two or three, but it wasn't very many. I mean, and this is next in stone. This is something that we can change later when we get to a point that we, I think that that will be beneficial to Grantville, where things could be safe there, where there's more activity downtown. But all I'm making a comment about is I didn't reference the climate control. It was all about the security of our historical artifacts.
All right.
Well, the mayor's putting in cameras everywhere.
Okay. Other discussion?
I feel that the depot should be able to be utilized to honor our veterans and our history. And that, that's the way I feel, and despite the way I feel about it, and I think you could, you know, utilize it for several different things, but to exclude it totally, and to me, that we shouldn't do that.
Okay. All right. We've had a motion and a second. All in favor of converting it to a rental facility? Raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Motion carries. Decision on Handbook for Advisory Agency Board Commission Task Force Members. I believe the decision is to select to do this and move it into the clerk's office to be scheduled when it can ever be done. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Decision on S F Y twenty twenty-four Contract for Services with Free River Area Agency on Aging. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of adopting this contract?
Aye.
All opposed? Decision on Appointment of Annette Larkins to Serve on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for Term to Expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Any discussion?
Is there any discussion? Is she here?
She's right there.
Oh, she's here. Is that you?
No, we don't need to know that.
But she is.
She's here.
Okay. You know, that's important.
I like this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
I just, you know, we, people ask to be on these committees and, you know, there's a work session and then there's a regular meeting, and there never is. Thank you for being here.
Okay. All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Opposed? Decision on Appointment of Eric Estad to Serve on the Historic Preservation Commission for Term to Expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I thought we were giving a different application.
Well, I believe she's here, right?
I'm here, yeah. Okay. Well, I'm just asking a question, that's what the discussion was in the other room.
So just to add, I have received an email from her. She's quite wanting to join and wanting to be connected, just FYI.
Okay.
All right. All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She's here.
Yeah. Thank you.
Who is here?
Eric Estad.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Someone said something about another, I mean, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
She's appointed. Decision on Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash nineteen to adopt the City of Grantville Fiscal Year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other further discussion?
I'd like to amend it.
You can amend the budget. You have to vote on it as it is. It's a balanced budget.
I'd like to amend the motion.
Okay. Although we've already seconded it.
We haven't voted or elected a motion.
Well, first, we're going to vote on adopting it, and if it doesn't pass, then we can talk about amending it. We have to pass the budget tonight.
Is that?
It has to be passed tonight.
Is that Robert Hulso's board and Mr. City Attorney?
Well, you've got a motion and a second, so you've got.
That's it. All in favor of accepting the budget? Raise your right hand and signify it. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
It is passed. Decision on Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash twenty to adopt the updated twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine capital improvement plan. We're going to pass this on a resolution for all of the projects at once. We've had numerous discussions on these. So do I have a motion?
I'd like to amend it. I'd like to amend, I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to, to require bids on all projects and not to include preferred vendors.
So she's referring to getting the tree cutting for LaGrange and fixing the sewage, I mean, the pipes out front from Crawford, who we specifically use for specific reasons on both. The amounts of those are fifty, fifty, and fifty. So do I have a second on her move? Hearing none, it fails. All right. Do I have a motion to approve, yeah, capital improvement plan?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I want to make sure that, I'm good with the plan, but I want to make sure we get a monthly update on where we are in each project, you know, how you got your reports set out. So we know when we started one and when it's supposed to finish, and we can follow along.
Absolutely. We'll get that.
And was this plan on our state plan?
Well, we're going to take a week off just because we've been really busy. And then we're going to be working on RFPs for the water line and working, starting on, why, as information comes in, like the parking facility, et cetera, et cetera. The park information, we already have. So just kind of based on how it rolls, I'm going to start in September. It's going to start. Now, it's going to take, some of these are going to take five years. Understand that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that we need to update so we can follow along and feel like we're making progress.
All right. All right. We've had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Decision on Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one to approve and adopt an intergovernmental agreement for waste water maintenance and service with Calhwood County Water and Sewer Authority. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
That's for three years, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Locked in.
Locked in.
All right.
All in favor?
I have a question.
Okay.
The annual cost for this contract, what's the?
You have the monthly cost.
The monthly cost, what is the annual cost?
I have a calculated that out. It's probably around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, based on ninety-six hundred dollars a month.
And do they come in independently and work within the city?
No, they're only handling our sledge ponds and testing our water system.
And who monitors them when they come in to do the work?
Public Works.
Who do they work with in public works when they come in?
Our Public Works Manager, Joan.
Who?
Joan.
Joan?
Yes, Joan.
Oh, Henry.
Joan Henry.
She's out in the field?
She's here.
I know, but when they come to work.
Well, once they are into the swing of it, we probably won't interact with them at all. They'll come in and they'll take care of it.
Oh, so they work independently? And give us a report?
Yes, multiple reports.
Right.
And this is where they will keep us from the EPA violation?
Well, right now, we're not in trouble with that. But what it will do is make sure that the systems are working properly. They will make sure all the chemicals, they'll do all the testing. And again, we've been a bit remiss in all that, so this will take care of that for us.
Right, and they keep the documentation.
They keep it all, and you file all the things you have to file with everybody, you know. They, guys, they handle Calhwood County. I'm certain they can handle Grantville. All right? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain.
Decision on Resolution Number twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two to adopt the twenty twenty-three City of Grantville Uniform Development Standards Policy Manual. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Another question. That document was given to us at the last meeting. It had approximately two hundred and fifty pages of it, and I had the big thick thing. I feel I didn't buy it today. It, and my question is who, at that time, was who proposed this? Who proposed this? Who's recommending?
It's written, it's written.
Who's recommending? Can I finish?
Okay.
Who's recommending approval? And what is the opinion of the planning commission on this? This is development standards. Do we have a recommendation for the planning commission?
It does not, it does not go before the planning commission. They do planning and zoning. This is what regulates the developers as they come in to do what they need to do. This is something we have been sorely lacking, and Brennan, our city engineer, put it together, and Greshafer, myself, and the city engineer feel this is a very adequate document. If something ultimately needs to be changed, that's the wonderful thing about passing on resolution. But to us, it was a very, very comprehensive thing that we can now pass on to people who come in to develop here in Grantville.
Well, I'm asking this question is because this is a pretty comprehensive and complicated document, and to, for it to come to us with no recommendation from a person and ask us to approve it.
It was Brennan, our city engineer recommended it. He's our city engineer, and he's over planning its own.
Is that in the record that's recommended by the city engineer? There's nothing in the record that states, is that going to be an amended city clerk? That this is recommended?
He wrote the document. He wrote the document.
Well, his name is not on it anywhere.
Because it doesn't need to be on it. He's the one who produced the document.
He presented it at the work session.
Correct.
Went all through it.
Okay, where are minutes are being written? They're not inclusive. They don't indicate recommendations. They're just bland with the vote count, and for the record, we don't know.
We don't know who presented it.
When we're approving something that's referred to us, is recommended to us by an experienced, skilled staff person, their name needs to be in there, mentioned. If anything goes awry with it, well, we can't recommend that.
It's recommended by the City of Grantville. All right. We've had a motion. All in favor of adopting? Raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Decision on Resolution Number twenty twenty-three to trash twenty twenty-three Grantville Rate Fee Schedule Updated Rental Facilities and Fees. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
A question. This fee schedule includes certain fees for the utility company. But to me, it seems that we do need a separate document that includes all of the fees for the utility company. And my question also is, when was the rate schedule study last conducted? It's supposed to be conducted every so many years, the utility rate schedule. When was it last conducted? Does anyone know the answer to that?
Yes, I do. Electric rights, twenty nineteen. Water rights, twenty twenty-two. Gas rights, twenty twenty. Sewer rights with the water rights, twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
And those rates are in a written format, right?
Yes.
That's scheduled.
They're online as well. They're on the website.
On what website?
The City of Grantville's website.
The one that hasn't been updated in.
No, this gets updated every month. The rates are current. They're currently showing for the month of August, and will soon be going on for the month of September.
And the policy, do we have a written policy for our utility company?
Define what you mean by policy.
Written policy, like who, who has authority to change, to assess fees, to change fees? Who can waive fees?
Send the code of ordinances under utilities. The first two paragraphs. Utilities, as I remember, is chapter twenty-six. In the Code of Ordnances of the City of Grantville.
Okay, in that, in that chapter, is there any provision for any staff member having authority to change fees?
No.
Thank you. To waive fees?
Yes.
Who?
City manager.
So you can waive fees that we, the city council has established, you can waive them?
Certain fees, like late fees, disconnect fees for water.
And what do you base that on?
My judgment. My judgment.
Your judgment? You could just waive fees. Your judgment?
That's what I said, yes, fair.
Who would you waive fees for? Kind of give me an example. Who would you waive the fee for?
When someone sends in their check and it was sent in on the twelfth but didn't get deposited till the sixteenth, till the sixteenth, and they get a late fee on the fifteenth. If they can prove to me that they sent it in on the twelfth, I will waive their late fee.
So as far as any charges that are assessed to a customer, there is a provision for making, is there any hardship provisions?
There is. Depending upon what the hardship is.
You can't pay your bill.
No.
When you're disabled?
No.
Okay, now who makes these rules?
City Council passed the Utility Bill Process or Procedure or Policy on April the thirteenth, I believe, twenty nineteen.
Okay, I know we have a utility committee we're not meeting, but would that be something that the utility committee would look at as far as the policy for our utility company and the fees and, you know, the written policy?
That could be something they could look at if necessary.
Do you recall the last time they did that?
Yes, when the Utility Bill Policy was passed by the overall mayor and city council.
What year was that? Do you recall?
Like I said, I believe it was April the thirteenth, twenty nineteen.
And it's sometimes about time to look at it again, isn't it?
I disagree.
Okay, well, that's just my personal opinion.
Okay, let's move on. All in favor of adopting the rental facilities and fee schedule, raise your right hand, signify aye. Opposed? Decision on Alcoholic Beverage License Application by Jessica Testa on behalf of Sanguin Door located at Thirteenth Church Street, DBA The Brakes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Decision on Special Event Permit Application by Grantville Kiwanis Saint Jude Walkathon to be held at eight a.m. on September ninth, twenty-twenty-three with a rain date of September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing as how we have no citizen comments, the business of the evening is done. We are adjourned.